Welcome to the Goodyear City Council meeting. We're excited to have you be a part of this important public process. Tonight, you will have the opportunity to address City Council on both non-agenda and agenda items. The agendas and the speaker request cards are located on the tables outside of council chambers. You must fill out a speaker card in order to address the City Council. Please hand in your completed card to the city clerk before the start of the meeting. If the meeting has already begun, please hand it to any city staff. You may also check the "I do not wish to speak" option on the card. This allows you to still voice your opinion on an item on the record without having to speak. In accordance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, please contact a city staff member if you need any assistance. Public comment on a non-agenda item will take place during the citizen comment portion of the evening. These are items that don't appear on tonight's formal agenda. The city clerk will call your name when it's time for you to speak. At that time, please approach the podium and tell us your name for the record. You'll have a maximum of three minutes, and there is a timer visible from the podium. When the light changes from green to yellow, your time is coming to an end. When the light turns red, your time is up. Note that you may also choose not to speak if other speakers before you have said what you wanted to say. Shouting, cheering, and loud noises will not be tolerated, and violators may be removed for disrupting the meeting. Goodyear City Council meetings stream live on Facebook, YouTube, Twitter, and online at GoodyearAZ.gov. Follow the city's social media pages so you don't miss out on all that's happening in Goodyear. Thank you for coming to this meeting and being an active part of your city. And remember, it's a great time to be in Goodyear.
I'd like to call the regular meeting to order for June 6, 2022. City clerk, please read a roll call.
Let the record reflect that all members are present.
Please join Councilmember Campbell in the Pledge of Allegiance and Invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Father God, we come before you tonight with hearts full of thanksgiving to you for all the blessings that you have bestowed upon our city and upon our citizens. We thank you, Lord, for our first responders and for the military who protect us 24/7, and we ask that you give a hedge of protection around them and their families. We also pray, dear Lord, for those who are afflicted with illnesses, may you give them strength and courage and health to regain, and may they be blessed beyond measure. We ask these things in thy name. Amen.
Amen. We have one communication item tonight. The item is to recognize the city of Goodyear for the highest level of workplace safety and health excellence. That's mighty proud. Please introduce yourself.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight's communication celebrates the city's success in taking care of our workforce. Specifically, we will be recognizing two departments, Public Works and Parks and Recreation. These two departments have been on a continuous improvement journey regarding their safety program. Tonight, we have some members of the Parks and Rec and Public Works teams in the back as well, and we also have the ADOSH group with us as well. I'm going to turn it over now to Willie to talk about some of our journey, and then he'll move it on to the ADOSH team. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So let me start off with the journey of these two teams that started back in 2012. The two teams worked with the Risk Department and looked at creating a safety committee and a safety program for the two departments. One of the things that they looked at was how do we improve and make a safe workplace? So what the teams have done since then have accomplished is creating standardized procedures, work job hazard analysis processes, and programs. But that was not enough for the teams. They were looking at how do we upgrade where we currently are. And one of the things that one of the team members actually mentioned, hey, what is our next level? So what the teams did is reached out to us and asked, hey, how do we get some improvements? So we looked at the needs of the department and really looked at one of our guiding principles that we have on building partnerships. So in 2016, we partnered with ADOSH. They was on our Department of Occupational Safety and Health. And through this partnership, what we were able to do is provide some improvements in the safety program. And one of the things that the teams have done is really looked at the value of what this partnership brought. And part of that value, we thought that it was an asset to the team. So we re-entered into another three-year partnership with ADOSH, and this was back in 2019. And part of the improvement that they did is, and the second partnership that ADOSH and the city of Goodyear, was to look not only improving our safety program, but also introduction of our wellness to create the whole point. So looking at that whole picture, but then also providing the opportunity for the two departments to apply for the voluntary protection program, which is known as BPP. Since 2012, there has not been a municipality that has applied for BPP. Goodyear's the first. And with that, I'll introduce Jesse Atencio, the ADOSH Director.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council members. Thank you for having the state of Arizona in today's meeting. I wanted to just be here today and just congratulate everybody that's here, just to know that the wonderful accomplishment that's been happening at the Public Works as well as the Recreation Department that could not be done without a collection of group of people. You know, it takes a village, right? And in this case, with Julie's leadership and also with Tim's stewardship, we've actually got to the point where you guys are actually one of the safest places in the state of Arizona. Out of 64 sites in the state of Arizona, that's less than 1%. There's about 185,000 places of business, not including our public entities, which the city of Goodyear represents. So it's a phenomenal accomplishment. We can't be more prouder from you from the state level from accomplishing this, which many employers do. This is Honeywell. This is Valleywise, which used to be the old Maricopa Healthcare, integrated healthcare system. This is Honeywell's. This is Raytheon, like I said. There's also large construction companies like McCarthy, Sunt, that are building these large buildings. What they accomplished, you guys did too. So with that, I applaud everybody for being here and accepting this, and also Willie and also Tim's cooperation with us. So we really appreciate that at the state level. The governor wants to make sure that we have safe workplaces. This attracts businesses to here, and something that you can say, hey, if you want to come work for us, we can assure you as so far as possible that everybody's going to have a safe and healthy workplace because we've gone above and beyond. So thank you for much, for all the involvement of it. It's our first iteration of it, and I'd like to call up a couple of people here. Willie, you have some folks with the Public Works. I feel sort of like Moses with tablets. Because I got some giant tablets. But literally, these are large plaques and stuff that you will only see in certain areas. If you go down to 202, you will see the actual old Valleywise hosting and stuff, and they'll platter flag. You guys will find that flag very proudly. You're very happy for what you guys have accomplished because not too many people can. Tim, is there anybody else you'd like me to call up?
Nathan and Javier, who we speak to.
Nathan?
Yeah, I'd like to give you guys, if this is for Public Works, we'll shout with the guys. And the other one is the city of Goodyear. And it is signed by our chairman, Delpho.
Can we get you guys all like punched in? I'm going to take a few because somebody always has their eyes closed. Perfect. Thank you. You know, I always pride ourselves of having the best and the greatest employees in the valley, and this just kind of reiterates that. And I want to thank all of you for your efforts. And with that, is there anybody that would like to add to that? Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, this is a huge accomplishment. I remember when Jesse came out to my old employer, and it took us four years to get BPP certified. So it's a huge accomplishment for municipality to be able, one, to be able to do it, and for any employer to be able to do it because it's such a huge accomplishment. I've been to about five different BPP conferences around the country as well. So it definitely sets the bar higher for any employer, and it's definitely a great standard for any employer to strive for because it reduces Ocho recordables and injuries, life-changing events that affect people not here at the workplace but also at their home for the rest of their life. So definitely a great accomplishment. So I'm very proud of the city for pursuing it and then also accomplishing it, especially their first try. So thank you.
Anybody else? No? And again, great job. Great job. Next is the time for citizens who would like to address the City Council on any non-agenda items for the jurisdiction of Goodyear City Council. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Does any in the audience wish to speak? Will the city clerk please read the consent agenda items 2 through 13 by title only?
Number 2, approval of minutes. Number 3, recommend approval of a new Series 12 restaurant liquor license for Ocho Rio's Jerk Spot located at 13291 West McDowell Road, Goodyear. Number 4, remove a member from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission. Number 5, approve the Goodyear Smart City Master Plan. Number 6, adopt Resolution Number 2022-2250 approving an intergovernmental agreement with Maricopa County for the exchange of roadway services, providing authorization, direction, and an effective date. Number 7, approve a bulk water agreement between Liberty Utilities, Litchfield Park Water and Sewer Corp., Liberty, and the city of Goodyear. Number 8, approve a budgeted expenditure of up to $750,000 to complete safety repairs at Goodyear Ballpark, project number 50033. Number 9, approve the Puebla Verde Storage Development Wall Easement Agreement. Number 10, approve the expenditure for fuel for city vehicles and related budget transfer. Number 11, adopt Resolution Number 2022-2252 authorizing the submission of three applications for state shared revenue grant program requesting economic development, healthcare, and public safety funds to the Taona Odom Nation, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents relating to said applications, and authorizing the city manager to execute a grant agreement if grant funds are awarded, and authorizing the city manager to approve the required budget transfer if grant funds are awarded. Number 12, accept the dedication of two quitclaim deeds for a portion of Camelback Road adjacent to the Allen Ranch's development. And number 13, approve the termination of easements associated with abandoned city well site number 4.
Thank you. Does anyone on the council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, can I have a motion in a second to approve items 2 through 13?
So moved. Second.
What do we got? Did you got them? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Eyes have it. There's one public hearing on the agenda. Public hearing item is for the tax levy of 2023, truth and taxation hearing, and for the proposed final budget adoption for 2023 and approval of the truth and taxation increase by a roll call vote. Open public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Ryan Biddle, the Finance Manager of Budget and Research here at the city of Goodyear. And this evening's public hearing, as you just said, is to cover both our fiscal year 2023 final budget as well as truth and taxation. So on our agenda, we've already opened the public hearing. I'm in the middle of our staff presentation. After the presentation, we will open for public comment. We will then close the public hearing, and we will ask for approval of truth and taxation increase of $233,835 by roll call vote. After that, immediately, we will adjourn and reconvene in a special meeting to approve the fiscal year 2023 budget. Quickly to recap how we got to this place, we started the fiscal year 2023 budget back in calendar year 2021. Departments began entering requests into our budgeting system. I know personally, our department, we'd like to think we budget year-round. I'd like to think the city thinks about budgeting year-round. Some of those thoughts might be good, some of those might be bad thoughts, but at least they're thinking about budgeting. We presented council with a preliminary general fund forecast back in February. From there, in April, we got together for two work sessions where we went in-depth on the budget from the city manager's recommended perspective. After that, our tentative budget was adopted in May, and where changes from the city manager's recommended budget were presented and reconciled and walked through with council, which brings us to where we are tonight for final adoption. So getting into the final budget, a lot of these slides will look familiar. They are the exact same slides, a pared-down version of what we did for our tentative budget in May, and the reason they're the exact same slides is because nothing has changed since our May tentative budget presentation. So if you look at the slides in front of you, this shows where the money comes from at the city of Goodyear. Our resources are coming in at about $731.1 million for fiscal year 2023. The majority of that is either fund balance-related. I want to point out that the fund balance, a large portion of that is restricted for use, so it's not something that we can just spend wherever we want. It's restricted, for example, to capital projects, to be used by enterprise funds, special revenue funds, for example. And then the operating revenue, we'll dive into a little bit more here. $387.1 million is our operating revenue for fiscal year 2023. Sales tax is our bread and butter, as usual. That's where over a quarter of our funds come from. Following that are our enterprise fund user fees, so that's water, wastewater, and sanitation. The next biggest chunk of the pie is our state shared revenues. So as Goodyear continues to grow proportionally faster than the rest of the state, so will that piece of the pie for us. And the next biggest piece is property tax, which we'll touch on here in a minute as So if you look at the expenditure side, where does the money go? Our budget is very capital-intensive as it's been the past several years. Forty percent of our budget is going to one-time capital projects. After that, a good portion, about $116 million, goes to personnel. Our supplies and services, about 20%, is kind of the catch-all category for the other operating expenditures that are not CIP or personnel-related. Looking at that same number, just broken down by department, the money follows where a lot of the capital projects and where the bodies are. So Public Works, Streets and Engineering, Public Safety, those are the big pieces of the pie, and they have been for the past several years. If we look at personnel, we are adding 67.04 full-time equivalents to the budget this year. When that's all said and done, around 43% of that will be related specifically to public safety, which shows our emphasis to our public safety personnel. On the bottom left of the screen in front of you, you can see a breakdown between full-time FTEs, part-time, part-time, which is one body for one position, and then seasonal employees, which is just a lump of hours, so that might be multiple people filling in for one specific position, and that's usually in our Parks and Rec department. If you look at our five-year capital improvement plan, it is fully fundable per financial policies. Some of the largest projects we have in our five-year plan, our Goodyear Water Reclamation Facility expansion in 2027, our Australia Bridge project, which spans multiple years, our Camelback Road, and Bryant Disposal. I will note that streets and transportation projects make up around $255 million or just under 41% of our total five-year CIP spend. Getting into the truth and taxation portion, I mentioned at our tentative budget adoption an exhibit about where do tax dollars go, because we always have a lot of questions about where your property taxes are going. So this is a breakdown right here. You can see the city of Goodyear gets on average around 13% or, said differently, 13 cents for every dollar that you spend in property taxes goes directly to the city of Goodyear. And you can see that education is the biggest chunk with almost 60%. Our fiscal year 2023 budget includes about $22.4 million of forecasted property tax collections. It is important to note that truth and taxation deals only with the primary portion of our property taxes. This is the piece that's included in our general fund portion of our city budget. Truth and taxation is triggered per state statute when our primary property tax levy increases from one year to the next, exclusive of any new construction. The truth and taxation amount for this year is $233,835. We show this slide each year just to kind of break it down a little bit further. So if you, this shows both our primary and secondary rates. It's important to note that our combined property tax rate will stay the same at $1.74 per $100 of assessed value, and that combined rate has been consistent since 2018. You can see for an assessed value home of $100,000, and again, we're talking assessed value, not market value, this is for taxable purposes, someone would pay $173.50. If you look at the Goodyear piece, which is the box at the very bottom, a Goodyear property tax, so the average median assessed value for a single-family home in Goodyear is just over $200,000. So that equates to about $365 of your total property tax bill that is going directly to the city of Goodyear. And this slide is just to confirm that we've completed all of our outreach and notifications for both TNT and the adoption of the final budget, which included a press release for TNT as well as two weeks of newspaper ads for our budget schedules. Our statutory requirements for our state schedules are posted in the library with the city clerk and also on our website, and those we also published in the newspaper as well. So our next steps, we're asking council to take public comment after this presentation on both truth and taxation and the final budget, close the public hearing, approve our truth and taxation amount of $233,835 by roll call vote. Once that's finished, immediately after, we'll reconvene in a special meeting as required by state law to adopt the fiscal year 2023 budget. If you're looking ahead, similar to CFDs, we'll formally adopt our tax levies at our June 27 meeting. Are there any questions?
First now is to see if there's any speaker cards.
No, Mayor.
Speaker cards? Anybody in the audience like to speak? Then I can close the public hearing? Can I get a motion in a second?
I'm moved.
Second.
Did you get it?
No. Sorry.
Motion?
Motion.
Second. Okay. Open for council discussion. Start with Councilmember Stip.
Ryan, thanks for the presentation. I'm going to try not to have this be that muddy discussion about levy versus rate and the math calculation, et cetera. But I read in the paper a kind of disturbing headline which reads something to the effect that Goodyear is going to raise its taxes. So our tax rate has remained unchanged since 2018, and that is the part that we control. So how do we raise our levy by $233,000 without raising our taxes?
So, thank you, Councilmember Stip. So because our rate, which we control, remains unchanged, that means something else would have had to have changed to have that increase, and that what changed was the assessed value of the property, of existing property in Goodyear, and that is given to us directly by Maricopa County. From there, it's just a straight calculation. So when the, if our rates stay the same, assessed values increase. The assessed values, this particular year is what's driving the truth and taxation hearing.
So the city of Goodyear is not raising property taxes. Correct. And I think that is the definitive sentence that anybody who's listening to this or watching this needs to hear and understand. We have not changed the tax rate since 2018. And I know it's complicated for those, I, you know, I think, I look around us and go, it took us six years to figure it out, or, you know, this conversation about rate versus levy, et cetera. But the takeaway from that is, we have not changed that. And I think that is the key for residents to understand, for anybody reporting that to understand. And if you're unclear on it, please reach out to the city to get the in-depth discussion on that. So, Ryan, I appreciate all your effort tonight. Thank you.
Anything else? Go ahead.
Thank you very much for making that point, Councilmember Stip. I think that's really important. And the other part that I think is also just as important is that the legislature, the way they have it set, there's only, I think you had that slide up there, the set amount on current property owners, it can only go up, what was it? Two? Three percent? I'm sorry, I forgot. Two percent. Two percent. So it can only go up so much with the property valuation. So even if your house is, the value's skyrocketing, if you're a current property owner, you're not going to be paying the same as someone who's a new property owner. It's kind of broadening the base. So I think I would just like to add that as well. So I think that's important for our residents to know that, even with these skyrocketing housing values, it is basically capped.
So I can't help myself. Both Councilmember Lortano and Stip are absolutely correct on the property tax, but because of that cap that exists on this legislature put in place, we're lagging so far behind, right? So every year, we're going to see, you know, this increase in our budget just because it's trying to catch up to the home values. And so I just bring it home to, you know, looking at our revenues again to see if there's other places that we can help the taxpayer.
Thank you. Council, Vice Mayor?
No, I just want to say thank you again. I mean, this is a, we start this process in January, so we've been talking about the budget and refining it all the way through that time period. So thank you for all the hard work you and your team put it together. And just echoing what Councilmember Stip and Lortano mentioned about how the rate versus levy operates, and I'm glad that we tried to put some of those myths to bed on us raising the property taxes. So that's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Kato?
I want to say, Ryan, you've come through this budget cycle like a seasoned professional. I know this is your first cycle with us, and so thank you so much for walking us through. I especially appreciate the clarification that Councilmember Stip brought up. And it is reflective of Goodyear, we have a consistently fiscally conservative policy and we've worked very hard to maintain the rate, but yet be able to accomplish the things that we want to do. We have a balanced budget. You can see where things are going. We have, what we do here is transparent. You can access it, and certainly, we bring it in front of the public before we make final decisions. And it's a lot, a lot of work that gets us to this place, but thank you for a good process.
Campbell?
Thank you. Well, thank you, Councilmember Stip, clarifying the headline because we all have had conversations with some of our constituents regarding it. And when we tell them that we didn't raise our tax levy, they understood, and it's the county assessor who assesses how much my home is worth and figures out how, if it's going up or down or whatever. I do thank the Finance Department for their wonderful presentation and for your hard work. This is really very time-consuming and very in-depth, and you just did a super job. So thank you so much.
Just a couple of comments. It's hard to build on what's all there, except one thing I'm very proud about is we have money in there to deal with scalloped streets in the city. You know, as we grow, traffic's getting more and more difficult to get around. Typically, in the past, what would happen is development would come in and do the half-street improvement, so you could be going down a road and have three lanes, two lanes, three lanes, which just backs everybody up, and people going through the developments, try to get out. We've got money in this capital budget to go ahead and put those improvements in first, and then get the money from the developer to try to speed up traffic coming through the city, as well as trying to do some of the lights synchronizing all as well. But can you go back a couple of slides, what I want to kind of highlight on the property tax, which a lot of people aren't quite maybe aware of? The vast majority of your bill is education. Ours is, what is it, 11? What is it, 13%? I can't read it from there. 13%. So as a result of the increase that you're talking about, if you go back, I guess, up forward 22, right there, if you even have an average of 200,000, say for example, versus what it was before, what's that, $8.68 if I'm reading that right on 105, so double it? So you're talking about $16 increase, something like that. And again, depends on your assessed valuation, if it didn't go up or whatever. But Councilmember Bray is right, they put a cap on there, and we're constantly working from behind because your assessed valuation can only grow by state statute 5%. That's it, by state statute. Now, they put that in because during the recession time, when everything...